Thank you, everybody, for coming. There's eight. I'll thank you online if the person called meeting to order. Want to help with the pledge? Thank you. I'd ask for motion of consent for 1.03 approval of a regular board meeting agenda. To approve the February 24th, 2025 regular board meeting agenda. Any questions? All in favor?
Oh, good. You need a second? I'll second.
All in favor? We oppose? I'd ask for consent motion for 1.04 approval of special board meeting minutes. Under recommendation of the interim superintendent to approve the minutes for the special board of education meeting on February 10th, 2025.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. And last is a ask for consent motion for 1.05 approval of minutes for the board of education meeting. To approve minutes of the regular February 10th, 2025 Board of Education minutes.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So. Christie, do.
All right. I'm actually going to pass it right over to Mrs. Savino and our brave student council representatives who are here.
We're making work, Pam.
Oh, yes. And what better way to celebrate the month of bravery and honesty than having some of our younger student council representatives here to speak? Carter, Asher, and Holden.
So fun fact, these are all teachers' kids, so you might. Okay. Um, so Carter Lohr and Asher Wedge and Holden McIntyre. So they're, it worked out well because I had to steal them often after school. Um, but I could just shoot a quick email and steal them after school, so.
All right.
What's one of the things we've been doing?
School Council Appreciation Week, Monday, February 3rd. Through Friday, February 7th. Students filled out our A Heart Where They Think You Know. Were during pictures from Miss Kay to show her appreciation.
I wish I had taken an after picture. If we get a chance to look outside Becky K's office, this poster is like overflowing with notes and pictures.
Oh, that's nice.
Hank, her therapy dog, even made a, made a picture on top, King Hanky, the dog. Um, so the kids really were thoughtful and did a really nice job.
Sure, Mrs. Cable will really like it.
Yeah. We also sang to her in the middle of the day as well, so she hopefully felt appreciated.
I'm current, and another thing we're doing in student council are kindness candy cards. So we, at lunch, we will, there's this like table. And you can buy a kindness candy card. Here's an example right there. And um, they're 25 cents each. And what you'll do is you'll write a kind message to friends or staff members. And we will also, the next week, we added a piece of candy and delivered that to the classroom's mailbox.
What did we use the money to help for?
We used the money to help the Reading Team Fund Read Across America.
Do you remember how much money you raised over?
We raised $60.
Whoa.
Over that.
Yeah.
Very nice.
So next week is Read Across America Week, and so we helped fund the snacks. Um, for next week's family night, which is on Monday. And the kids actually signed up today at our meeting after school to run the snack station. They, they signed up for some different volunteer time slots, so that'll be really nice that it kind of comes full circle with not only us donating for that family night, but also the kids are going to work it, set up, clean up, and then during the actual event.
And I happened to notice that there were new signs.
Yes.
Well, yeah, to promote the family night that's coming up. So I saw there was a face painting station, the sign.
They made signs for each station.
Yeah.
And they tried to make them space themed as best as we could to match the theme.
We were doing the Valentine's for Veterans. And it spread kindness around our school and made a community connection. And it supported our school, how it made it goals. This is an example of one.
Very nice.
It's like awesome. Lucky Leopard Con Classroom Month, teachers will be given a cutout Leopard Con to hide around their room. And if you find it, you will get.
We argued today at our meeting whether student council members would be allowed to be the student finding that Leopard Con. So still up for debate, I think.
Leopard Con's hard to find.
That's right. We, we did decide the teachers would be the ones to hide it because depending on, you know, how organized they want to be with kids destroying their room or whatnot.
Another thing we're doing at student council is a golden spatula winner. So whichever class does good at lunch has a chance to win a golden spatula. They'll hang over their classroom door. And uh, yeah.
Every week, I think it's set every week, it'll change.
It'll change. So you'll have it for a week, and then someone else will get it, and that's kind of the book.
So that was actually collaboration between, between student council and our PBIS committee. Um, so the kids and I had talked about this gold and spatula idea. And then PBIS was also brainstorming some of the different areas of the building that we're trying to focus on. So it kind of was a great collaboration between the kids and staff members. Um, because obviously we need some sort of more formal tracking, um, piece in the cafeteria in order to be able to say this class versus another class. Um, so yeah, it was a great collaboration between the kids and the staff.
Welcome to the day we're gonna be celebrating Miss Mills. And.
To be true. Don't want to give anything away, so.
And school lunch hero day will be make decorating aprons for the people who work at the cafeteria. The nurse appreciation day will make cards for the knights. And these are just some examples, and there's teachers and staff appreciation day, and we'll celebrate the teacher.
Wow. That was fantastic. Oh, you did a great job. Anybody have any questions for?
I, I have a comment, just not that I want to create any competition, but I think the elementary student council just put the middle school, high school student council. They've done a tremendous job.
They gave the way.
Well, hopefully you'll be back as a little high school student council member.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Um, last time I presented CPSC, our preschool, uh, process and numbers. And this time I'm going to go up to school age, uh, process and numbers. The school age CSE Committee on Special Education is kindergarten through age 21, recently age 22. Uh, we don't have anyone at that later ages yet, but all of those in between. Tonight, we'll talk about the different classifications. So in preschool, it's just one classification. In the school age, you have to classify by a certain disability. Uh, we'll talk about the history of numbers, like I do with CPSC, our continuum of services that we offer, and then our process here. So these are our numbers currently this year of classification by disability. So I don't need to read all that to you up there, but there's a few disabilities that we don't have in Geneseo, uh, which many, many schools don't have, orthopedic impairment, traumatic brain injury, deafness, deaf blindness. We don't have any of those. Our most common ones, like many other school districts, are learning disabilities, speech or language impairment, as we see in the younger grades, and then other health impairment. So that's kind of a catch-all, hopefully they don't stay to one specific category. Multiple disabilities are typically are out of district students. Um, visual impairment is, uh, with a few kids. Uh, and then we have a, you know, a chunk of kids with autism as well. This includes in district and out of district kids. These are our CSE numbers, uh, in history. I talked about the top number last time. It's as of bed's day. It doesn't match the chart. The chart's about a couple off because I did that as of current, as of February break. Uh, and I was like 168. Um, and then this is as of bed's day. So as of bed's day, early October each year, that's where we're CSE wise. Um, so how numbers fluctuate, obviously incoming transfer students come in. Uh, we have the incoming kindergarten students come in and then exiting seniors go out. Um, so you can see pretty steady in the last four years, and then we had a big jump last year. Uh, and that was a, a pretty big classified kindergarten class, not as many seniors that exited um, with disabilities, and then we have quite a few transfers in, um, over the summer, including in district and out of district. So with those, um, big increases don't necessarily mandate new staff. We have to look at each child case by case. Well, some of these could be just related service students of just getting speech, or just getting OT, um, or just even getting counseling. Some may be out of district students that we don't even need to worry about, uh, programming for them here. Um, so it really is, um, looking at each individual student. Uh, these are the continuum of services, um, that we offer here in district. So our common one is direct consultant teacher. Uh, that is a general education teacher and a special education teacher in the class. But the high school would be a full 44-minute English class. Uh, at the elementary school, it's roughly 45 minutes. Often they're in there much longer. Uh, and that's what most of our kids have, as many districts have, uh, um, their direct consultant teacher. The integrated co-teaching we had, we have as a continuum of service are elementary functions like an integrated co-teaching classroom. So for example, um, my fourth grade classroom has a special ed teacher and a general education teacher in there all day, every day. Special ed teacher might pull a group of kids out. Um, so it does function like an integrated co-teaching classroom, um, where they are planning together, they are teaching together. It's not just, um, um, the special ed teacher helping specific students. Um, as we get into the older students, it's more direct consultant teacher because our special education teachers are in the science class and associate class, holding a resource room, so it's often tough for them to plan for all six of their periods with six different teachers. Um, related service only, okay? Uh, it's about, um, about 20 kids. So these are kids that just have speech on their IP. They might be in a general, they're most often in a general education class. Um, so those related service only kids are about 20. Um, it seems to change, you know, we get a few more students that classify or a couple declassified as, as the year goes on. And they're often our primary kids, K2, K3, occasionally a fourth and a fifth grader there. Um, moving on, what I didn't include here is, so I have 611, 811, 1211, and 151. So 611, which was supposed to be here, that was our, um, it's a behavior-based classroom that we have in the elementary school. Um, 611 is a maximum of six students with disabilities with a teacher, uh, and that one is a support staff, often an aide, sometimes a teaching assistant. So we currently have that this year. 811, we have the two 811 classrooms in the elementary school, same idea, a maximum of eight students, one teacher, uh, and at minimum one support staff. Both of our 811s have multiple support staff in them. Our 811s mostly have students with autism in them. Um, and like I said, uh, they actually each, this one this year, both of them this year, each have a teaching assistant and multiple aides in there. The 1211 and the 151 are students that, uh, are in the middle school, high school. So 1211, we offer a, a middle school 1211 English class and a middle school 1211 math class. They're not maxed out. None of these, we have one 811 with seven students, but none of the rest of them are maxed out. Um, you know, roughly eight, six to eight kids in this classroom. Uh, and then a 151 is our, is our high school special courses, so a maximum of 15 kids. I think our maximum is like six this year, seven. Um, and then only one teacher and a support staff. So this would be, uh, English skills class, special class. Um, uh, and our social studies classes, government and econ, US history, global, depending on the year, depending on the cohort. But this year, we don't have a global skills class. We have a US history class. Next year is probably going to be opposite. Um, so these are roughly 12 kids in this setting, roughly 10 kids. It all depends on the subject. Don't offer special class, science, and math. Um, all of our students with disabilities at this point take a two-year algebra, I should say, all of them. Some of them take a two-year algebra course in ninth grade and 10th grade, consult teacher course. Um, and then science, they're, they're in the biology or science, uh, consult teacher setting as well. All right, so the process, um, for this year's process for new students. So parents can refer, parents have the right to refer their child. We've had five parent referrals this year. Prior to today, when I added a couple more, um, school referral, they go through our IST process, uh, which is our, um, process of, uh, a teacher brings it to, uh, an IST team, that's, um, inter-school study team. And, uh, looking for extra suggestions. So they try a couple of things, they progress monitor, they do a few things. They go through that process and things just aren't working. Um, they'll, they'll do a school referral as well there. Transfer students, like I said, that was a big chunk. Eight is pretty big. Specifically, they come in. Often, they come in August 25th to September 1st. Uh, not just a Geneseo thing, it's just traditionally how, um, how it works. Reevaluation, so this is all of our students that are up for reevaluation this year. That's every three years, they must be reevaluated. That's across the district, so those are, all of our school psychologists are doing these. Um, in addition to if they have speech, OT, PT, they're doing a reevaluation for that testing as well. And then annual reviews are all over 166. Often, we'll try to tie these meetings together to save additional meetings. Um, so roughly 58, maybe 50 of the meetings are their reevaluation and, and review meeting in the same. So, um, the other part of, that I didn't add in the CSE process that school psychologists and related service providers also have to do is those incoming kindergartners. So they've done, um, they've done some visits over to KidStart, which is some, where some of our pre-kers are now in programming. They'll view them, observe them, see if we're going to refer them to CSE. And then if we do, we have to do all that testing as well. So it's about, maybe about 10 to 12 that will actually, um, test, not all of them will be programming, some of them might be just related service only. Uh, so future steps is continuing working with the admin team and special ed, um, team leaders and team regarding long-term planning. Like I said last time, UPK coming in, talks about, um, long-term planning there, any expansion. So what are we going to do with 811 students as they continue to get older? Um, are we going to change or update or delete at our continuum of services? Um, does 1211 go down to the elementary school? Does an 811 go to the high school? Um, and then any related service needs, as, as I talked about last time as well. That's short and sweet, but that's kind of CSE in a nutshell, uh, this year. Questions?
I mean, the, the obvious question is we, we increased 29, um, one to, one year to this year. Will we, what do you attribute that?
Um, I attribute most of that to, right, you take nine of those kids that, um, transferred in. Uh, and you take, uh, an incoming K that outnumbered the outgoing 12th grade. Um, and then some, uh, CSE referrals that were pretty early in the school year. Um, that is an anomaly, like it's not, that doesn't typically happen in a school district. Uh, I do see it in school districts happening more specifically, those are the county seats. Um, the county seats typically, uh, have families moved in that, where a lot of the resources are in the county seats of, of counties. Um, but yeah, that was a pretty big number, much of, which was unanticipated as well.
So you're working on staffing, then, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, I'm working with, actually, I have a meeting tomorrow, uh, internally with Dr. Hunter, the principals and Stephanie. To, um, to continue trying to figure it out.
Okay.
At what point, um, do you have a projection for next year?
Projection of numbers? Um, I, I mean, I have that now, not like right now, but I, I, I have a general idea of like probably what kids might qualify for programming incoming K. I know those that should be graduating. Um, and I know all the out-of-district 19-year-olds that are going to continue and 20-year-olds. So general sense, it's the unanticipated move-ins that we just don't know about. And we had like two or three high needs, like out-of-district move-ins last August, which kind of blew up the budget pretty early. Yeah. Great question.
Brad, when you have openings, your 811 is not completely filled. Do other schools, or do you talk with other special ed directors about, you have students that you have needs to come to our district?
Yeah. We had a student last year, uh, and then, um, from a different district, and then they went back to district because they opened their own programming. Um, and yeah, we meet monthly and we talk about, um, programs monthly. Uh, I have a, I have an internal team, 611 team, that's looking at a current kid now from a different school district. And how we do that is, um, they send me their IP, the team looks it over and see if it's going to be a fit. So we just don't want to, you know, we have a, a good thing going within the classroom and putting someone else in that's not ours may upset the other part. We're still also an age short, so putting them in, in a classroom that we're not fully staffed is a little bit challenging as well. Uh, but yes, we do have those kinds of conversations.
Any questions? Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a quick, just a few quick notes, uh, from myself and a few quick notes from Mike. I want to give the board and those in the community watching an update on where we are on negotiations and upcoming, uh, meetings with our architects and with planning teams. Uh, right now, we are working on negotiations with three bargaining units uh, whose contracts will expire at the close of this school year. The administrative team we're bargaining with, the transportation employees we're bargaining with, and our, our management confidential works on an annual contract. So every single year, in a sense, we, uh, bargain with them, but in this case, we're trying to do this in a more concerted way so that we have a consistent plan in place to, um, support, uh, these management confidential employees. Our management confidential includes, um, the superintendent secretary and director of buildings and grounds, those positions are now open, director of transportation, payroll clerk, treasurer, maintenance mechanic, um, tech services, and head mechanic. The admin team negotiations is currently underway. We've already had one meeting take place, and we have exchanged proposals. The admin team is represented by a group from SAENES, which is the state association. And the district is represented by BOSI's legal counsel. Uh, as I said, we've exchanged proposals, and our next meeting is set up for March 4th. Transportation, we're still planning. Um, we're meeting, uh, with, uh, Ms. Reidman, Mr. Holt, um, Stephanie Helt, like Sal, tell myself, and we're examining our contract and looking at some of the things that could be critical issues for our employees as well as for the administration. Uh, transportation is represented by the MICE Association. And once again, BOSI, uh, BOSI's representative legal counsel will be providing support for the district. We hope to begin to exchange proposals and information, uh, sometime after our final planning meeting tomorrow. Uh, and then with our management confidential group, um, we're setting up to schedule appointment and identify critical issues with those employees so that we can move forward with contract development for them as well. Architect meetings, full schedule. So we are in the final stages of pre-construction. What that means is taking a look at those general ideas that we use to build the budget proposal or proposition proposal for our community. The general idea is now I have to get some specificity, and that's being accomplished through our planning groups or our user groups. Um, we have, uh, four different user groups, uh, that are addressing the planning and the development of designs in the four critical areas of the project. Uh, athletics planning group, uh, is being coordinated, uh, by Craig Veely. We have a front entryway and security planning group being supported and directed by John Holt. We have a UPK along with elementary art and music being directed and supported by Crispy New. And we have a fine arts planning group that is looking at our auditorium projections, um, that, um, uh, Megan is, uh, directing that group at this point, uh, in time. So I appreciate the help that our administrators are taking away from their building to guide this work in the pre-construction. Pre-construction leads to design development and cost estimates. So from pre-construction, we know what the key ideas are. They go into designs, and then the designs are then costed out. We plan to bring that information to the Board of Education on April 21. Once we have design development, then we're ready to go into construction documents, very different than just general designs. But the specifics of all the key numbers and all the key resources in order to bring the designs, uh, into life. Um, and construction documents with cost estimates will be our next piece of work, and we plan to bring that to the Board of Education on June 16th for your review. If everything is reviewed and we look like we're in the right direction, those construction documents will be sent off to SED following any minor changes from the Board of Education. And then we're on to our six, eight-month wait for approvals. And then we're on to the, the good work of getting estimates and beginning. So just two quick updates. Um, can you respond to any quick questions or I'll turn it over to Mike?
Have all the user groups completed their work or are they still in the process?
One more meeting? One more. Yep. So they've been providing input. They've provided two rounds of input, and now they need the feedback back from the architects to make sure it's where we need to be.
Thank you.
I just have three very brief updates. Uh, one more for the community. I know in the district calendar sent home that it was March 3rd and the 17th, our next two board meetings, it's actually March 10th and the 24th. So I want to make sure the community's aware of that. Um, next week, we will be hearing more about the New York State budget as well as other priorities in education coming out of the Capitol. It is a lobby day for educational leaders, so a lot takes place then. Not sure we'll have all the answers, but maybe we can get a better, uh, estimation of where we're going to be. We sent an email, our letter home to families. We have reduced Friday bus runs from four to two, and that was simply due to lack of ridership. Very rarely that we need for. And we can certainly accommodate our students on Friday afternoons with two buses. It may result in a little longer bus ride home, but parents are aware of that, uh, and will persist. We're going to continue monitoring that going into next year. Obviously not having buses to a sufficient level of capacity. Uh, if we can do things differently, we need to explore that. But any questions on any of those topics?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question like about, um. The letter was talking about students or parents needing to notify the front desk the day in advance.
Just for the Friday.
Just for Friday, yeah, okay.
There, Monday through Thursday is not changing. Um, but we want to make sure to give the drivers on Friday. Yes, we know one group does meet, an elementary group meets on Fridays. So we know that group really doesn't have to because that'll be consistent. But if we have middle school, high school students that are staying, just to try to. Accommodate our drivers to the best we can so they can plan effectively for a ride home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, the budget presentation?
This is part two of our planned budget presentation. Um, and we'll be talking today with you and sharing with you our earliest projections. And, and, um, they're projections based on a good study and good input from our department leaders. As well as from, um, any of our principals who are involved in any of these domains. So it is projections, but with, with solid input in the non-instructional side. Uh, we are really working, uh, to focus on the budget goals that this group developed. And it took good, some good time and some good thought. And, um, there is some excellent direction in our budget goals from the Board of Education. So we, you've asked for clarity, you've asked for specificity, you've asked for accuracy. Um, and that's why we look forward to these presentations because we are going to focus on those critical areas that you've been talking about. If you recall, our report number one on the budget was projected revenue plan. And, uh, during that conversation, we shared with you that about eighty, I'm sorry, about forty-eight percent of our revenue. Comes from New York State funds, um, and we made our estimates on what that funding would be. Based on the governor's budget, and as Mike just mentioned to you, we're going to continue to get up, updates regarding that governor's budget. Um, and all of those key pieces. The second piece of our revenue report was around, uh, forty, about forty-seven percent coming from our tax base. And at that time that we presented to you two weeks ago, our tax gap was still being developed. We have started more discussions about the tax cap. And we are looking forward to providing you with more information so that you can dig in. And give us some specific direction about the tax cap on March ten. Uh, so, that being said, today we're going to talk about the non-instructional budget. Uh, it is the first of two parts of presentations regarding our spending plan. First, non-instructional, and then we'll come back to you on March seventeenth with the instructional budget. And then on April seventh, we'll put those pieces together and give you a look at a first draft budget. Um, before, uh, Mrs. Hilt, Mr. Sal, tell Mr. Holt and I present. Um, I want to make sure that you take one more good look at our budget goals. Because we have really posted them on the wall, but every time we, we meet and talk. We dig into those things in order to make sure that when we are developing a budget plan, we're meeting away at those budget goals. So that being said, let's start taking a look at some of these non-instructional budget plans for the year.
So this is just a snapshot of how everything's going to play out, how we've estimated. We'll go into more detail of each specific category as to the components of each category. And some of the potential cost increases for these. So the major categories that we're going to talk about are maintenance, transportation, technology, the superintendent. District operations, which is kind of like everything that's not like very specific. So there's a whole bunch of different little categories. Um, we've got BOSI's expenses, debt service and interfund transfers.
So I, I hope people don't mind us going back and forth like we did last time, but that's, um. Part of one of our goals was transparency. This is the first time, um, that it's been such an open process since I've been a part of it. So I, even though I've, I've sat in on the, the, the budget planning, um, going, Stephanie's definitely doing the heavy lifting with this. But, um, as a team, we're kind of building back and forth. So we're going to tag team back and forth on a lot of these pieces, but, um, um, drilling into some specificity in each one of these categories. Um, I do like how she categorized this from last year's, um, adopted budget to next year's projected budget. And, um, in each one of the categories, you'll notice that at the top right, we have what our staffing levels are. There's been so many changes, you know, there's been, um, people that have left the district, come onto the district. Um, we wanted to keep that as a running category in each one of these sections, um, uh, uh, to keep out. And see if there's questions, um, as far as where we're at. So, um, in our maintenance category, um, this is funding for next year. You see two maintenance mechanics that's reflective of Aaron Davis leaving the district and us replacing that with a, a secondary maintenance mechanic. Um, twelve full-time cleaners and six sub cleaners. Um, so if you look at the categories that, um, she drilled these down into. The equipment, uh, jump from, um, thirty thousand to seventy-five thousand is most reflective on a vehicle. Uh, it, it's a extra truck for the, um, transportation department that has a plow on it. Um, utilities, you see some breakage on that. That's mostly based on, I believe, the cost savings with some of our efficiency programs. You can see it, um, we're forecasting that's going to be a decrease of thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, contractual, um, components, we are budgeting for increases, um, for our contractual spending. Um, the biggest ticket there that you'll see is in repairs and, uh, the details of that's coming, coming in our next slide. But basically what that's going to be is repaving and striping of the parking lot. We can't do that as a, um, capital outlay project, um, after talking to our architects and, 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 and project team. Um, but anyone that's been in our parking lot recognizes that is a huge need, uh, uh, it's been a need for several years right now. Um, but especially with this brutal winter, it's almost impossible to see the lines on it. So it's, it's a big ticket, we recognize that, but, um, it really is a safety issue. Uh, Mr. Sal, tell, you referenced several fender bender types of accidents that have happened already.
We had more in one week than we had in two years combined probably, so, yeah, yes.
So those are the big changes as, as you see, um, comparative from one year to the next. Most of it encompassing the repaving, restriping of the parking lot and another vehicle. Um, and this leads to, um, some details in it. So John, just the.
Sure.
Stephanie, just wanted to back up one slide. Am I correct, the utility reduction of thirty-four thousand, is that related to the EPC? It is? Okay, that's good. Good time to see those numbers. And I believe we're still waiting on the final reports of that, but that.
From day.
Yeah, yeah, all right, good. Um, we did want to include other components in that maintenance section, including, um, our current capital outlay project. Is replacing some of our exterior doors. We're, we want to continue with that. Those were big tickets. Those are expensive projects. Um, so, um, it, it's still a, a, a safety need, so we want to keep pushing that, uh, uh, in that direction. Especially knowing that we couldn't use capital outlay projects for the, the, the driveway. Other pieces to consider to keep in the back of our mind, roof replacement is, is still, um, hanging in, 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 in the balance. Um, ongoing projects with smart tools and cop segments, we've been working with, um, both, uh, both legs of that. As far as school safety initiatives. Um, PA system is something that I think has been talked about, but I want to keep bringing it up in, in the sense that. Um, even though it isn't an exciting thing to talk about, when people talk about PA system, it is a school safety piece. And ours is antiquated like you read about. It is old. Um, anytime it's not working, we are doing our best to band-aid it together. But that could be a big ticket item that we will have to cross that bridge eventually with. Um, other things that we are aware of, lead water testing has to be completed by, um, a year from now or ten months from now, December twenty five. Possible pool pipe replacement. I don't think that is, um, from the most recent repair that happened. But, um, we know there's some potentials, uh, with, with, um, pool issues. Air temperature, I believe we're in a decent spot for, um, the regulations as far as having to keep it less than eighty-eight. We are fortunate in the sense that we do have air conditioning in this building compared to a lot of, uh, um, older buildings. Baseball and softball maintenance of the field, we, we, we know that's a, a big ticket item that we're going to have to, you know, keep on, on, uh, on the radar. All of those things were on the.
Nope, that's okay. Uh, just a real highlight pool pipe replacement. We don't know how extensive at this. Piping damages that went into our pool, we, we have had a few leaks. Uh, Aaron and his crew have done a great job, uh, getting it going where we can still maintain and use a pool. But at the end of the season, and Mr. Veely, you probably know exactly, we're going to do a camera down in there that they can do now. And that'll give us a better idea of where our pools really at.
Yeah, it'll be the end of March, right after the modified season is over. The village has one of those cameras, Mike.
We were talking in finance committee, it's the original pool, right, it's fifty-two years old.
So, Mike, you were going to ask about those bullet points?
Are they, are they all on the, um, the building condition survey?
They are at the top of the building condition survey, and these are other notes. They are not in the budget. But those are things that are not going away, so they're, we want to keep it forefront in our awareness, even as we're doing our work for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, and just because it's in the building condition survey, it gives us some forward-looking ability and we can budget appropriately.
Yes, exactly.
Can any of these be part of, uh, contingency plan for the current projects?
It'd have to be within the scope of the project, so if not in the scope, we can't do it.
So the roof replacement is already part of, like, the roof replacement is already part of the scope. Over the new.
Yeah. Yeah. But I did, didn't they, I believe they also did a fold roofs, you know, did a C I D look at the fold. So I don't know if it was written in, but that's, um, potentially within scope. I'm just, I'm not saying it is. Yeah. I know they were discussing, I know we had conversations about what portion of the roof would be included, but I think they looked at the whole. I don't know the, the details beyond that. So moving on to, uh, transportation, um, once again, if you look at the staffing at the top right, um. Uh, Bonnie Wedeman, um, uh, is our supervisor. We have one, and Tim Tab. Uh, fourteen current full-time drivers, six sub-drivers and six bus monitors. Um, for the most part, if you, you don't see huge jumps in here, um, as far as one year to the next. Um, we have a contractual jump that's based on, um, some of our support contracts. This one specifically for our, uh, we have replaced all of our bus radios and portable, um, communication systems. With our administrative team and there is a, an ongoing cost with that. So that was, that was a, 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 a jump that we knew would be coming. Um, repairs, materials and supplies are, um, nothing huge. You know, tho- those are not huge un- unanticipated costs and there's a, a, a jump in insurance. But, um, that's basically what we're looking at for transportation. Are there any questions on, on that one? Just see what the next slide. Uh, they will, it'll break out some of those details, um, when we go back to this. And any questions on that breakout?
Do the radios work?
Um, there have been some issues with them. I will say that. They, they have, um, it's a much broader reach, okay? So without a doubt, when our buses are traveling further distances, we can still communicate with them in, in, in a much more effective way. I think there has been some issues that the company has recognized. They've come out and worked with us. Um, to, uh, make, uh, changes and, 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 and work with us to, um, you know, hear our concerns. The issue of the communication between, um, um, our buses and, uh, the local PD, um, is close to being resolved. Uh, they've been working with the nine-one-one center, so. Say that again, there's a patch for it? There is a patch for it. There's a cost for that patch, but we, we're, we're moving forward because we look at that as hands down to school safety issue. So it, it, it's, it's non-negotiable when it comes to being able to communicate with our fleet when they're out in the field. That being said, as, as far as other components to keep in the back of our mind with transportation. Um, one-year study to possibly return, um, for two runs. So this is not for next year, but we've talked about the potential cost savings of not having a single bus run. If we had two bus runs, what that would look like down the road. But, um, please understand that is not for next school year. Um, it is a huge difference when you do some, uh, something like that. It would take a lot more planning than what we have right now. But that is something that has been looked at, um, talking about minimizing the outside transportation contracts. Um, we just talked about consolidated after-school runs started this week. Um, we're going to reduce the Friday runs. Um, and we talked about and, and attempted different ways to consolidate athletic runs, especially on those combo teams. But those, those are, those are challenges, but we are looking at, at, at any type of cost savings that could potentially happen. Um, that's pretty much a snapshot of where we are with transportation. Um, questions regarding that? Um, on to technology, so this is not the BOSI's technology cost. These are the ones that we would locally get funded for based on our enrollment numbers in New York State, um, uh, uh, projections. So hardware is, is about the same, about thirteen thousand dollars from one year to the next, based on our students. Um, uh, supplies has been consistent for years. Those are the supplies that we use, cabling, uh, connect, you know, connectors. Uh, it, it is not dealing with the, um, you know, it is dealing with, with, with consumable types of supplies. Uh, mice, keyboards, that kind of thing, not necessarily the consumables like ink and toner and paper and those kind of things. Software, you'll see a jump that was, um, um. Underrepresented in last year's budget, um, it says five thousand dollars. We could have spent more based on our per cost, uh, cost per student with software. So Stephanie made that accurate based on what our current number is. Hardware, software, textbooks are interchangeable monies, you know, it, so we get a certain, uh, amount based on the number of students that we have. And you can flop them between budget, uh, codes for, for those concerns or for what those needs are. So not too many changes with this one. And, and, and here is a, the formula on how the software and hardware, um, funds are, uh, you know, allowed. Based on what are allowable either, what that number is. Um, the private schools that exist inside of our school district, like, uh, Johnson Christian School, they are entitled some of those funds as well. So they will work with our business office and say that we're looking for these products. They, they come out here for visits and we've, we've gone out there to give what our suggestions would be as far as technology. But once again, this is not the, the big ticket BOSI's ones that Edutac charges. These are the, the more local types of technology, um, purchases. Questions on the technology right now before we move on? Um, Stephanie, I think you're going to go with the superintendent one.
Yep, so the next one is the superintendent, pretty simple, pretty straightforward contractual and materials and supplies. Your contractual expenses are going to be your memberships, um, any conferences. Hotels, things like that. So we are showing a little bit of a decrease, um, for next school year and it's all estimated. The next one is district operations. So this is just a bunch of different things piled into one. The insurance is going to be our building insurance, our cyber insurance, our student accident insurance. Um, we are showing an increase. They are projecting a ten percent increase on all of that. Um, so there is a pretty substantial increase in our big, um, insurance expenses. Interactual are going to be any, um, fees, any things that we have to pay out to our fiscal advisors. Um, anytime we ban or bond out, um, projects, any services that we provide. That's going to be in your contractual expenses and then just your materials and supplies, so your consumables. We're not too big of a, um, increase, but there is a little bit of an increase.
A piece that I missed, um, from the prior one staffing, you see business office at three. That consists of Stephanie Hilt as our treasurer, um, Jen Rebeck, uh, is our payroll. And, uh, Jacob Fuller as our account clerk. And if you go back to the superintendent one for the superintendent and secretary. And then technology network administrators, Andrew Poe, who works in my office. And the computer services assistant is the position that we're filling, that we're looking to fill for right now. So I just didn't want to, um, miss the. So I just didn't want to um miss those pieces.
So the next is going to be our BOSI's expenses, so that's everything that we contract contractualize out for BOSI's. The next slide will provide some more detail on what exactly is in all of the BOSI's lines per se. Um some of the bigger ones are the central data processing, so that's going to be all of the technology stuff that is run through BOSI's. So that's going to be your MICA purchases, any computers, um all of your contractual edutac expenses.
Including all the support fees, those are big ticket items, all of our internet, all of our phones, all of our copying, all of the support when we uh one-eight-hundred help us to to get their technology support. But which the 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 push in that area, this thirty-five thousand dollars. We talked about MiPA multi-year purchase agreements and funding technology through BOSI's. Last year when we had that up there, there was one that was missing and that's representative of that thirty-five ish thousand dollars that we didn't want to lose sight of because it's definitely more of a responsible um uh way to fund technology over the long haul. But we have to make sure we're accounting for for where that's coming from. One MiPA comes off the books, one another one comes on the books, but it's a more sustainable way to place the technology.
Um another line you can see a decrease in is career exploration, so that's going to be your um C T E kids. That is based off of a three-year average, our average has decreased, so that is why we are showing a decrease there. But overall, BOSI's expenses increasing eleven thousand, which isn't too terrible. Any questions on BOSI's?
Is it fifty-six percent rate that we get?
I believe it's roughly, yeah.
Fifty-six is what I'm seeing on our essays when we purchase now, it does that's what our current one is at the end of years and then they will be calculated, but it's plus or minus. It it's in that fifty-six to sixty percent range is my understanding.
So
Been consistent.
So to explain what that means is is that money that we spend, we get fifty-six percent. That eight following their back.
Correct, correct.
And in comparison to other districts, maybe your district's eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent, so that it it it's where Geneseo is.
Right.
Yeah, one of the lowest districts for BOSI's aid. Who determines that? I don't know either.
Yeah, combined wealth ratio.
It is.
Yes, the local wealth.
It's the wealth ratio.
Yeah.
Maybe that'll change with the new formula that's come out. So that's what we're hoping for.
And we realize that's a lot to digest, a lot of of text and numbers. Um we haven't put them all up there yet, but we want all of the slide decks that we're putting up on the website for for um, you know, help as we're preparing, but so people can come through here and and understand it um with with some context.
So the next slide is our debt service, so this is everything that we have to pay out for the new project that we've done, the EPC, any um some of the old projects, the bus garage, we are still paying for. This is just planning out what we're going to have to pay next year to cover those debts. We are having an increase, um a hundred thousand dollars of that is related to our bus purchases. Um the other hundred and thirty thousand is just based off of the project that was just completed. These are going to change a little bit, but this is just rough estimate.
Just as a kind of footnote to this, though, in the previous slides, there was a thirty-eight thousand dollar reduction due to EPC, so
Right.
That quite frankly would be a net little bit.
The next slide is interfund transfers, so this is money that we budget for in general fund that we pay out for, so for the capital, that's going to be our capital outlet project, so we budget a hundred thousand, that pays for all of our new doors. Um the new one on here is special ed, so this is going to be the summer school. The general fund is responsible to pay twenty percent of the total cost of summer school. Something that always has to be done, just now including it in the budget.
So for the summary piece, um I once again want everybody to take a look at each of one of those categories and see if you have any final questions. Just a reminder that the maintenance piece, which shows that um one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar increase um still includes the snowplow as well as the ceiling and striping of the parking lot area. And uh the debt service, again, though Stephanie just spoke to uh an important reminder that this enables us to return to a five-year rotation for purchasing of bus vehicles as well as um the debt that we're taking on with the new project. So we'll stop here um and see if there are any other questions or thoughts regarding some of those categorical areas.
I'm actually going to hold off a couple of comments until the audit finance report, so I'll just, okay.
So here's some key uh items coming up. As I said previously, our March seventeenth meeting is not a twenty-fourth, that's where we'll do our draft instructional budget. April seventh, first budget draft, April twenty-first, final budget, B O E approval. Other key dates, uh April twenty-first for petitions and budget candidates that that are going to be due, and the twenty-second, we'll need to approve the BOSI's budget as well.
The only thing I would say is somewhere in there should be a public hearing.
That's in May, correct, correct, that's early May. We'll get there on key dates, but that's a great reminder.
Perfect, excellent, great, thank you, thank you all. Nobody signed in, so. I'm going to turn to Matt.
Yeah, so we have finance committee meeting tonight, uh so we went over E-rate funding and some possibilities there to maximize funding for the districts. Talked about a couple of different scenarios. We talked about uh potential uh language for uh upcoming budget propositions. One of which was a potential for a bus proposition. We went over the revenue status reports, appropriation status. Uh we talked about the S P three reports and the communication that we received from the state head office. And then initial budget lines, which we just saw as a as a whole group. And then we had uh an initial tax cap discussion. And I just want to say the the amount of clarity in the documents is impactful. In your presentation, for the first time, I I got a direct answer about what that subcategory for the superintendent contractual means, so thank you. When we talk about transparency in government, this is what we're talking about, so I think we are well on our way to fulfilling that goal.
Anything on Ed Lynn?
Um just that we also talked about um a proposition for a cap or reserve.
Oh, right.
That's all Matt covered, I think, yes.
Yeah, right, and and the so the cap or reserves is just a creation of the fund, not that we're going to put any money in it, but just that to have that fund available, but should we have reserves that we want to put money into because we know that we have issues with our building that need to be addressed? That would be a good parking spot.
And legally and financially, we have to specify an amount, albeit that's somewhat arbitrary.
Yes, and and taxpayers have to approve that type of fund as well as approve that fund being used, so.
Yeah, thank you, I I just wanted to kind of defer my comments until, you know, Matt and Lynn had a chance to speak. Tonight I I was able to sit in with finance, meeting with Craig's, Craig's out of town, and uh gave me an opportunity to kind of take a closer look at, you know, the behind-the-scenes conversations that take place. I want to echo what Matt and Lynn have said that that I have been on this board for a number of years and and the amount of clarity, the amount of line item reviews and discussions that are taking place is commendable, to say the least. Stephanie, John, Lynn, Matt, John, Mike, you know, and and I know every department head
Yeah.
and I don't want to leave them out, and and G F A in particular, have all done a tremendous job of of kind of working together and coming up with, you know, I know it's too early to to know where a budget's going to be, but the amount of of line item that transparency, for lack of better words, is is among the best I've ever seen. And I just thank you all for for that, uh having a chance to see some of the conversations and the lines and the amount of work that you're doing and the amount of of it, I know everybody isn't, I'm a spreadsheet person, I think Stephanie has outdone me by far in spreadsheets, okay? And it's it's just great to see the different options that we could potentially work on, so thank you all.
Yeah, I I mean, just just to be very book and several different options at such a granular level is is just commendable.
Tells me I got to stuff up my gate now. All right, thank you. Kevin, you're in hold for this policy during this day.
Uh we have the final read of the seven policies that were submitted for February tenth, final read is slated on approval, it'll be adopted, put into our policy manual. We have uh suspended for a time being the policy committee meetings during the budget workshops and stuff like that because they meet every board meeting, all right, and stuff like that, so we'll pick up in May after the budget is.
Thank you.
Yes.
G C E F, uh they just approved two wonderful opportunities for our school. I'm also meeting with them on March thirteenth, so we're going to look at some of our policies and practices and make sure they're aligned with what the committee wants to see, how we can best utilize funds and get the funds to staff and other initiatives that are important for our students.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, so I'll turn to you, Kevin, on personnel.
Personnel, I'd like to ask for consent vote for items eight point zero two through eight point zero seven.
Hey, any questions on any of the personnel items?
Um not particularly these, but um I did want to uh at our last meeting when we were um talking about all the reservations and the um, you know, to the retirement and other reasons, um I could be inadvertently left out, um you know, Sherry Kalida was wonderful when she was here and uh, you know, just to publicly state that we are going to miss her. Um she is the person that knew what you needed before you knew what you needed. And we appreciated her her service here for the past five years and we wish her well, and same with Aaron Davis also.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, and what you made second in all favor? Any opposed?
Under new business, I'd like to ask for a motion uh for for the second vote on items nine point zero two through nine point zero five.
Second?
All right, um any questions on any of those, so this is again the final for nine point five that Kevin was referring to with the policies? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Under the business office, I'd like to ask for a motion of consent for items ten point zero two through ten point zero six.
Okay, any questions on any of these, uh with the architecture review of smart schools and boiler and so on? Yep, well, I like hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Yeah, no, we'll, you know, executive session, you're in one room.
Hi, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment of the board meeting at eight oh seven.
All in favor, you're in eight oh seven, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You'll take.